It's entirely up to you. Go ahead, just. Crowd is gonna cheer you on at this point.
Okay, I've done a couple of these before, so do I have to get my address here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Jill McNamara. My address is forty-one oh four West Dover Drive, Crown Point, Indiana, LOFS. Okay, I moved here in two thousand and fifteen. Knew absolutely nothing about this community or the community I moved in. I just needed a bigger house really fast to take my mother in with us. Three years ago, I had to have an outpatient procedure done at the hospital. I came home and by the next day, I had an unexpected emergency situation which required ambulatory care. No problem there, I called and they came, but recently, I was scheduled for that same procedure again. And so this time, I thought I better call and give them a heads up because that poor EMS guy said, "There's nothing I can do to help you. I'm not trained to deal with this." And actually, it was a strange situation. I don't think anybody could have, you know, fixed what was happening. Nonetheless, they got me to the hospital. Well, I am a president and founder of my own nonprofit organization. So a casual part of all of my conversations with anybody that's involved with a nonprofit, like the Lake of Four Seasons Fire Department. "Hi, it's your partner. You know, what do you do?" And so that was a conversation that eventually became a little disconcerting, but that's not the focus of why I'm mentioning it right now. So I know it's a fire department, that's a volunteer, all I knew. They get an envelope every year, ask me who's in my family, which would tell me how much I should give them for, you know, come to my assistance. So I had a lot of concerns though after that little bit of conversation I had with the fire chief, which eventually led with phone call to the new police chief. And I did find out from talking to both of them, both of their departments are understaffed and they're underfunded. Now, that did concern me. But I did notice that since I moved here to Winfield, there's been a lot of new development and construction and road changes. And that concerned me too. So first, I want to say thank you to everyone who did not approve any more additional residential construction on that eighty-one acres of land over there on, I think it's six hundred and seventeen. I just don't see how we can handle that. Based on some of the research I've done since that conversation with the fire department, I've done a lot actually, but I'm not even gonna bring all of that up. So I keep notes, so I keep it short. I grew up in Griffith. Anybody who's familiar with Griffith knows, they have three fire departments. Three. I lived in Marigold, they had two. I lived in Sherwood, they had four. I think we have, by what I look, this has the most square footage of everything. We got one. And they use some other stuff. But then they use other companies to help them. So I asked about, and I learned, what I felt secure about, that fire hydrant across the street from my house that I told my insurance company that I had to reduce my insurance rate was not a fire hydrant to put out fires. I just learned that all of the hydrants within the Four Seasons are flushing hydrants and not one of them can be used to put out a fire. Which is why the Lake of Four Seasons has hydrant trucks. That was something new to me. So then I asked about the new construction here. Well, today, you know, I know the new water tower went up and other things have gone up. I said, "So at least all the homes outside have fire hydrants." This is when I learned that about between forty, less than fifty percent of the new constructed homes actually even have fire hydrants available to them. So again, I just want to thank you for not approving any more construction until, and I know, I know, because I'm old, that sometimes funding the safety things in your community isn't your number one priority. But if people find out, because I know my cousins moved out to Winfield several years ago and then they moved right back to Griffith. They were unhappy about something because he used to work for the town. But anyway, if people find out some of these statistics, I don't think I would have moved into the Four Seasons had I known that. Unfortunately, I really like my home now, so I may be staying a little bit longer than anticipated. But that has a lot to say. So I just wanted to make one comment to kind of like sum this up. But I'd like you to brought this community to be viable, and I really want it to be. I do know a lot of people, you know, from my involvement in my nonprofit. But to be recognized as a viable and a growing community, we need to be concerned with its police protection and its fire protection and protecting all those children that are in these new schools. And for that, that's all I wanted to say. Those are my concerns, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you for coming and I'm glad you're doing well and I'm glad that the fire department was able to take care of. Yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate your comments too. I think, you know, one thing I would offer is, over the last few years, the council's been very deliberate about our public safety funding. We recognized a few years ago how far behind we were, you know, in police and fire. And that's been something, that is our number one priority. I mean, last year, we raised, last year, the fire department got a fifty percent raise in their funding from the town. This year, or into next year, they're gonna get a fifty-eight percent increase. And so, we can't fix the past, but we are trying to make sure we're rightsizing as much as we reasonably can, keeping in mind we need to hire more cops, we need to pave more road, we need to add sidewalks. You know, we have a lot of priorities we have to juggle, but public safety is the first and foremost. You'll see that with not only the officers' pay, which, you know, we increased, I think it was about thirty-five percent from last year to this year. So we're trying to do some of those things to increase public safety. Like you said, it is a balance, you know, figuring out how much money do we have, what do we do? But I appreciate, you know, I appreciate you coming and voicing those concerns. And we're gonna try to do our best to make sure as much money is available for public safety, roads, parks, you know, all those kind of things. And we're gonna try to divide them evenly, but I agree with you. I mean, we're severely understaffed, our officers are overworked, the fire department's overworked. So we all agree with you on that.
You know, one thing came to me, Phil, I need to consider just one more thing. Just we, our consider was the newest and youngest community was growing. If there might be some way that people somehow not have to take a county tax for a few years? I thought that was a good idea.
The taxing.
I was at all those county tax decisions, decision things, but yeah, I think just for a little bit, given our viewing situation out here.
The taxing is very peculiar right now, especially the state legislature recently passed Senate enrolled Act One, which does severe damage to a lot of towns' budgets. Not so much with, I mean, we're gonna get hit, it's not gonna be as bad as some municipalities, but it severely limits some towns in their ability to function. So I don't, I don't see that, any of that, you know, it's just a high, yeah, I agree with you. I mean, it would be nice to get some kind of a reprieve from the legislature or somebody to help us fund town operations. You know, you mentioned the development, one of the things we're doing is forcing developers to chip in, you know, I mean, they have to, they have to pay a fee and they have to pay a public safety fee and road fee. I mean, they have to do this kind of stuff or how do we justify building more houses?
Well, do they, do you charge a developmental fee for all your new construction?
There aren't, so there's a negotiation for each project that comes in and then based on the volume of the project, what the nature of the project is, we'll negotiate those with the developers to figure out what they're gonna contribute. So for example, in our, we had a redevelopment commission meeting earlier tonight, one of the things that we approved was paying for the light at Pike, which we negotiated with the developer for them to contribute some and that we would contribute some. And in other cases, we may contribute nothing, we may require them to carry the whole thing. So it's kind of a give and take based on what, you know, the growth pattern of the town, what our objectives are, and then what the developers and the economy can stomach.
But a developmental fee could be assessed just for police and fire, is my opinion too.
Yeah.
To implement a developmental fee just for police and fire.
Well, the other piece of it is, maybe. I mean, it's not, you know, the other piece too is, so you live in the Four Seasons, right? So, you know, everything we're talking about won't affect anything that happens over in the Four Seasons because it's not part of Winfield.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, so the, you know, when we, when we talk to developers and we do all that stuff, you know, yes, it's, the forefront is police and fire and to your point about, yeah, hey, how do you build new stuff if you're not getting other, you know, funded? So they know when they come in that they gotta pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving to minutes to be approved.
Mr. President, I've read the minutes and I'd like to make a motion to have the minutes from the executive session meeting of July twenty-second and town council meeting of July twenty-second for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Tim and a second by Amy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Onto special presentation. Chief Byrd?
Thank you. You know, all of us in public safety, police, the fire department, EMS, the units that I call the public safety ecosystem, we always find it a joyous occasion when we can celebrate the hiring of a new police officer, the promotion of an officer, and even the retirement of a police officer. And tonight, we get to do all three of those things and more of that in a minute. This evening, I am pleased to announce that Todd Caster has become the first deputy police chief for the town of Winfield. I welcome everyone here tonight, especially his family, to his official swearing in ceremony. Deputy Chief Caster is a twenty-seven-year veteran of the South Holland Police Department. And let me give a shout out right now to all of those South Holland Police Officers back there for making his thing. Deputy Chief Caster brings a wealth of law enforcement experience to the town of Winfield. He recently served as a detective lieutenant in charge of South Holland's Investigation Division. His previous assignments include services as a patrol officer, a detective, a juvenile officer, and a patrol division supervisor. He has also held the position of assistant commander and sniper team leader for the South Suburban Emergency Response Team. Deputy Chief Caster holds a public bachelor's of arts degree in criminal justice from Governor State University and has completed police supervisory training at Northwestern University. He is a certified emergency medical technician and is a licensed FAA remote pilot drone operator. Deputy Chief Caster holds multiple professional accreditations that include field training officer, firearms instructor, less lethal force instructor, firearms armor and evidence technician, a computer crimes investigator, a stock to bleed instructor, and has multiple FBI SWAT certifications. Todd and his wife Dawn are here tonight, they're Crown Point residents and have four children and a granddaughter. And what I said about how we're gonna celebrate all three of these, Chief Caster retired from the South Holland Police Department on Friday, August eighth. He got hired by Winfield Police on Monday, August eleventh, and at that time also received his promotion to chief, deputy chief on the very same day. Quite an accomplishment, all in a weekend, a long weekend. Welcome, Chief Caster. Happy to have you on board.
Do a swearing in ceremony real quick.
Right there, right in the middle. Right in front of the Winfield sign.
Flip your mic around. Come out there.
Get out a picture.
Okay. He doesn't like photo lovers.
Sir, are you prepared to take your oath?
I am.
Who's ready to write him? I, Todd Caster.
I, Todd Caster.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
The Constitution of the State of Indiana.
As well as the community that I serve.
As well as the community that I serve.
I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge my duties as a police officer.
Discharge my duties as a police officer.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
In my capacity as deputy chief for the town of Winfield, Indiana.
In my capacity as a deputy chief for the town of Winfield, Indiana.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
Hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
So help me God. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Real quick, if I can get the South Holland PD crew up there for a quick picture.
Appreciate it, man.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Roll back.
Takes it back. I'm on the right.
We almost threw him in the car.
Is that the last official request for them?
We'll see how his probation goes.
I think you have three more races on there. There's a lot.
You can, I delete people and I make this all the time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for letting the sheriff with them.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. The one thing I'll add to that, thank you, chief, and welcome, deputy chief. This is, your hiring, I think, is part of our restructure, it's been fairly public. You know, like I mentioned to Mrs. McNamara, we are, we are focused on public safety and we're glad to have you here and we think you're gonna be a good addition to the team. I think it's gonna be good to have somebody kind of in the middle with your level of experience to help guide the younger officers that we have as we continue to add officers and grow the department, which is, you know, the council's goal. So that's it, I appreciate you being here and I'm glad you are joining the team.
Thanks for your opportunity, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, on to staff reports. Nick?
As you can see, the clerk's office is nearly complete. There's gonna be some cleaning going on tomorrow, furniture assembly soon after, and we can schedule to get Mike and his team moved over. So it's coming soon, Michael. Show the lights, that's all I got.
All right. How long do you think it'll be?
Three weeks.
Okay. So a month or so, though?
Yeah, yeah, realistically.
Okay, perfect.
I would tell you next week, but it won't.
Well, they still gotta move computers and we gotta get it set up, all the electronics stuff.
And I'm sure Tony's guys will be hard at work assembling furniture here next week.
Yeah. Very good. You're up, Tony.
Yeah, good evening. Our guys are still currently doing the normal sort tasks, mowing, streets being, all that kind of stuff. We're also getting ready for an item inspection coming up on September third where they're gonna inspect the facility out there, look for any problems we might have. I've been doing a lot of housekeeping out there, getting containment for all of our drums and our barrels and all that stuff. And since major construction is complete, we're able to get out back in the yard, get things straightened out and get things back in order. You know, so hopefully here within the next, by the next, oh, and then I should be getting quotes from the underground piping that I'm getting, doing for the downspouts and the parking drainage. I should have, by the next meeting, I should have three quotes. So, and we'll have to act on that. That's about it, guys.
That was good. Thank you, Tony. Chief Byrd?
You know, this past month, everybody's been working hard, staying busy, doing a great job out there. Just one thing real quick, last week, the, we have a contract, if you will, a subscription with the Northwest Regional SWAT Team. It's an annual subscription. We've used them in the past, they're an on-call unit of very talented SWAT operators. In the, in the, they handle the likes of active shooters, hostage situations, barricaded gunmen, and high-risk warrant service. Aaron Antmeyer was the commander of the team and he passed away as was during a hockey game in St. John. He's a former Gary officer, Dyer police officer, and was working as a St. John officer and commander of the SWAT team. We attended both the visitation and the funeral services for Officer Antmeyer and, and we just wanna officially recognize his family, the St. John Police Department, and the Northwest Regional SWAT Team in our condolences to them in their loss. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I think the council, I mean, I think everybody up here shares in that sentiment. It's, you know, you and I, you and I know this, but it's, it was interesting, it was disheartening waking up the next day and seeing all my law enforcement friends, I mean, it was everybody, every cop I knew was posting about him. And so I think that shows the sentiment of, you know, people in the community have worked with him and known him for years, you know, including you and, and all the officers. So I appreciate you, you know, bringing that, bringing that up. All right, Chief Firma?
You should have the call numbers for last month.
Excuse me, Kevin, can you come up to the podium, please?
Oh, yeah, with the recording.
The recordings don't pick up out there in the audience. Thought for future reference.
All right. You should have the calls from last month, that was a total of one hundred and fifty-six. Seventy-three of those were within the town. Just to add that, you know, we're in towards the end of August at this point, since we added the increased staffing this year. I am working on those reports to actually get you all that data. That will show our mutual aid has dropped tremendously.
That's good.
Which is a positive. And it's also helped with our response time. So a little bit of increase has gone pretty far.
Good.
So far for equipment, where we're at this year, everything's been done as far as maintenance. The newest pickup that we had, I think, late January, early February, just got put into service about a month ago. So far, that's been going well. We still have two people enrolled in the academy that started in July. They're expected to graduate two weeks before Christmas. So far, they're doing pretty well. We're finishing out doing a lot of our mutual aid training. We still have this month and next month where we have a few planned that are out of the area. We had a pretty successful one with Overt recently with their house that they had acquired on Thirty. We were able to spend a lot of time there and get some real-life scenarios put in that normally we don't get the opportunity to do. So if you know of anybody, Nick, that might be getting rid of some old houses, we're interested.
I'll keep you informed.
All right. We still are doing CPR classes upon request. We try to obtain at least a minimum of six people to make the class kind of viable. We do have a summer class scheduled for December. I sent the invite to Chief Byrd on that. Hopefully, we can get some officers maybe to join us with doing that. We're hosting it, it's a night in December and then a Saturday morning, total of like a eight to ten-hour class. That's kind of initial actions for searches. So it's, should be a pretty good program. As Chief Byrd already mentioned, the passing of Officer Antmeyer, we were able to actually send an ambulance out to the town of St. John on Monday and Tuesday to cover their town for their staffing, so they were able to attend both the wake, the whole day, and the services on Tuesday. Thankfully, we were able to get some additional people to come in, the staff of third ambulance, and cover their town for, from about eight to eight during the day.
Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we, we put it out and we got a bunch of people that wanted to jump on it, so thankfully we were able to do that. So far, we're kind of wrapping up fundraising for this year. The golf outing was a pretty good success. Our next one's scheduled for July tenth next year, already on the books. We plan to be at the Winfield Fest. We have our fire department open houses scheduled Sunday, October five, from noon until four. We'll have our, we'll have some different games for kids, some food trucks, demonstrations, and if weather permitting, possibly a helicopter, maybe even two during that timeline. Once it gets closer, we'll be able to get that confirmed. Other than that, I think that's all I had. Questions?
Very good.
One quick question, you mentioned CPR classes, is there a cost to that?
Thirty dollars a person.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to unfinished deferred business. Update on two thousand and twenty-four, one hundred and ninth, in Green Place.
I did my final walkthrough and found a couple unresolved items and I passed that list on to Milestone and they'll be resolving those.
You know when?
Hopefully soon.
Like this week soon or like?
Uh, next. Within the next month.
Okay.
Well, do we, I see a whole bunch of, I see a whole bunch of payments.
That's a different project.
Oh, doesn't matter, it's still them. So I'm assuming might we have a change in everything else related to that, that, if they were not to fix it?
Yeah, and we actually had a discussion with them, the longer it takes for them to get done, the longer they're on the hook for the project, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they still haven't released the project, we haven't accepted the project as released from them, so I guess technically it's still under a warranty.
Perfect. That means Sean could go through more stuff.
Finish quickly.
Sean should go out there again, do another, well, anyway.
All right. Update on two thousand and twenty-four CCMG?
That project will be able to be closed out with Milestone as soon as we get all of the items that are further down on the agenda. And then I'll need to do some paperwork to get it closed out within that, within the next month.
Okay, sounds good. Two thousand and twenty-five?
That one's underway, they've got, majority of the concrete worked on and they've actually milled a lot of the roads and have started paving in the trees.
Have you guys been out there kind of regularly? Because it's, and I know we've, we talked about this with staff, but we're getting a lot of calls about the work being done in there.
We've had a crew out there with them and.
Okay.
We've been trying to work our way through the complaints as well, the town's been receiving.
Okay. Has it been, I mean, has it been effective, you guys being out there to monitor or at least provide real-time feedback? Or has it really, I mean, is there anything we need to be doing to help, I guess?
I think we're doing what we can, it's just, they have their ways.
Okay.
Doesn't matter, I mean, if it's not gonna resolve the complaints, then we need to change their ways. Their ways might not be the right way.
All right, moving on to appointment of park impact fee committee members. Nick?
This is, as you know, we're updating our park impact fee, we have to do it every five years. We've already engaged with our consultant, the Arch Group. Togi Arshami has done the past two, he did our original, in which we had to do the park plan update to the comp plan as a component of that, and then the update about five years ago, so now we're ready to do the update again. These are town council president appointments to people who serve on the committee, there's five members.
Do you have the names, the list? I mean, do you just need me to read the names off?
I just need you to read the names off, yes.
We have JT Egan.
Yes.
Who else do we have?
Pete Meloff.
Pete Meloff, yeah, Pete.
Pete has been on the past two park committees, so he's very familiar with the process.
And just to be, to back up a little bit, the appointments by statute require.
Construction.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Construction background, finance background, and real estate background.
Or it's any, any of those.
You have to have, three of the five have to be one of those and then you can have one extra of each.
We have Pete Meloff, we have Pete Meloff, JT Egan.
Well, that's the construction, it's Pete, JT's the finance guy.
Yep, Lexi Segovia is finance also, Sasso Joweski, who's a Realtor, who we're missing. M. Michaels, also is finance.
That's it.
Yep, that's five. All right, you need anything else for me?
I do not. I do nothing.
Thank you.
Just a motion. I guess there wouldn't need to be a motion.
No, it's his appointment.
There's nothing else?
It's an announcement.
There we go.
The announcement hasn't occurred.
That's the announcement.
We are announcing.
All right, thank you. We got through it. All right, moving on to new business. Consideration of ordinance 378 zone change, Ag to R1, Valera Estates.
This is petition that came through the plan commission. On 101st Avenue, there was, basically, sometimes you end up with these in town, I kind of call them remainder parcels. It happens in Ag situations primarily where everything around it's been platted. You have this one piece that may be an odd size, it's probably zoned incorrectly, and somebody comes along and looks at the home on it. This is one of those cases. In this case, the home was still zoned agricultural, but it was, had been parceled around it over the years, and it only had about two acres left.
Very good.
He came to the plan commission to make it buildable. He did get his plat approval, his primary plat approval at the last meeting. This is a zone change to kind of bring it into compliance with the zoning code for construction.
One reading.
Perfect. Thank you. Will you entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 378 entitled only. In ordinance amending the town replacement zoning map, ordinance number 208-C, entitled ordinance amending town replacement zoning map ordinance 208, entitled ordinance establishing for the town of Winfield, Lake County, Indiana, zoning districts providing for the administration enforcement and amendment thereof and adopting an initial zoning map in accordance with the provisions of IC 367-7-4, all pertaining to the amendment and replacement of the current zoning map of the town of Winfield, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related there too. A lot of words.
Second. We have a motion by Dave and a second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consideration of contract for snowplowing with Midwest Enterprise Company. Tony?
Or?
Tony. Ebrick was our contractor last year. He has merged with Midwest Enterprises, so they'll have more people, more trucks. The contract, same as it was, there wasn't any increase, did you see, Nick?
There's no change.
There's no change. So, I mean, I look forward to you guys getting that contract signed for me so I can get it adopted.
Very good.
Make a motion that we approve the contract for 2025 snow removal, 2025, 2026 needed with MidRest Enterprise Company, Inc. So you have an amount in here? You got what it is? I think it's by the hourly rate.
Hourly rate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's sort of a monthly retainer of $1,000, and then the monthly, or, excuse me, the hourly rate.
Hourly, 140 and 240, I think it is. So I'm in my motion to include the $1,000 retainer and the hourly rates of 140 for the truck and 240 for the wheel loader.
Motion by Dave?
I'll second the motion.
Second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of engagement with Crowe for financial and municipal advisory services. This is, Crowe is the town's municipal advisor. They advise on general financial things, budgeting, planning, projecting out, you know, our finances, and this is just a renewal of that service. Will you entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the engagement letter with Crowe for financial and municipal advisory services.
A motion by Tim?
I'll second it.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Can we do four and five together?
You can.
Items four and five, we have consideration of pay application 17 and 18 to Haci construction, one for $253,075 and one for $147,156. These are recommendations from the sewer board.
Make a motion that we approve pay application 17 and 18 for the stated amounts.
Second.
A motion by Dave and a second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of pay invoice to Milestone contractors for $3,876.46 for CCMG projects.
So this one's a little bit of formality. It was actually paid back in January. It was a change order that you guys approved in January, and we had a bunch of invoices in that January meeting, and it accidentally got paid with those invoices. So it was for storm sewer. They got, they had to do some extra work, so that's why there was a change order.
Very good. Will you entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we pay invoice number 248015-034 to Milestone contractors for 2024 CCMG road project to install storm sewer inlets on Pike Street in the amount of $3,876,046.
Second.
Motion by Tim, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of change order number four, Milestone, for 2024 CCMG.
So this is a change order to balance the final quantities of the project, and it's a reduction of the overall contract price by the amount of $347,018.15, and then it also extends the contract time to get us through the meeting and get everything closed out with Milestone.
Very good.
Well, it's not a credit, like it doesn't, it's a reduction.
An offset.
Do we have to do anything to accept the reduction? To do the reduction?
You're just, you're just accepting the balancing change order to lower the contract amount.
I'll make a motion that we accept the change order number four for the credit of $347.18.15 for the quantity balancing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dave, second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight.
Well, eight through the N can be done.
Eight through 15? Eight, yeah, through 15.
So you can just read it and then we can sort of move it.
All right. Yeah. Item number eight, consideration of, we're going to take these in omnibus. Consideration of pay application number five to Milestone for 2024 CCMG in the amount of $22,527.26. Item number nine, consideration of pay application number five to Milestone for 2024 CCMG. David, do, I need, just procedurally, do you need me to say the street, or does it make a difference?
Well, it would be helpful for identification.
That's kind of what I was saying. As I'm going through, I realize that, so. Item number eight is for Pike Street South. Item number nine, pay application number five, 2024 CCMG to Milestone, is for Pike Street North in the amount of $22,739.46. Item number 10 is consideration of pay application number five for 2024 CCMG to Milestone for Park Street in the amount of $6,915.65. Item number 11, consideration of pay application number five for 2024 CCMG to Milestone for Newton Avenue in the amount of $10,461.72. Item number 12, consideration of pay application number five for 2024 CCMG to Milestone for 108th Avenue in the amount of $13,558.94. Item number 13, consideration of pay application number five, 2024 CCMG to Milestone for paving on 106th Avenue in the amount of $6,837.42. Item 14, consideration of pay application number five, 2024 CCMG to Milestone for 112th Avenue in the amount of $7,732.88. And item 15 is consideration of pay application number five, 2024 CCMG to Milestone for County Line Road in the amount of $15,692.42.
And Zach, just so it's clear, the reason why they're broken up that way is because for the CCMG work, they all have to be tracked individually.
That's good. Thank you for clarifying that. You weren't just making paperwork to make me read it?
That's why I said it to you. Sean and I were just trying to make you read.
I appreciate that.
And this is for the seeding, and then it cleans up. There are some rounding errors and other color colors that we found, just minor sins here and there. And then it releases the retainage for each, each street.
Very good.
It closes out the project.
With Milestone.
Would you like a motion, Zach?
I would like one, please. Motion by Dave?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, anybody wishing to speak on an agenda item, public comment? So you would have to wait this whole time, and then, you did anyway, though. All right, see nobody, we're going to move on to the treasurer's report. Mike?
Good evening. For your consideration, review, and approval, we have 10 pages of claims in the aggregate amount of $386,486.1.
I'll make a motion that we pay the claims in the amount of $386,486.1.
I'll second their motion.
We have a motion by Tim and a second by John. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Motion due adjourned.
Second.